Here.
Mayor Proton Marshburn.
I'm present.
Councilmember Berenger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Next I'm going to ask you all to take a minute to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. If you will pray with me now. All we need, we read in the book of the Proverbs where there's no vision, the people perish. We come this evening asking you to give us the vision that we make good decisions for the town of Garner.
Yes.
And give all the credit to you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Visions and comments. This time on the agenda for anyone who may wish to address the council on items not on the agenda. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Johnny Blankenship here to talk about 109 Village Green Trail in Garner. Have, I know I've got just a few minutes, but I have a handout to give to each of you, if that's okay?
Thanks, Sheriff.
Excuse me, could you provide one for the clerk too, if you have an extra?
And do try to limit it to three to five minutes.
I will. First of all, thank you for allowing me to stand before you and provide you with some information about something that's been happening for years. 109 Village Green Trail is part of Georgetown Manor, which backs up to Avisboro Road. New development has just happened there. I provided you with some pictures. The first, first three pieces of paper you got there are pictures from a rain. It's happened numerous, numerous times. I just captured this, this one. After that, after you see the pictures of what, what I've been dealing with, I provided you with a proposal to take care of this situation. Now, this is what I want to say to you, and I want everybody to, to understand, is that I don't come to the town of Garner with my handout to say, "I expect you to pay fully." I want to partner with the town of Garner to fix this situation. And that proposal talks about and gives a, a cost breakdown of, of what it would take to fix it. The last page, the largest page, is actually a sketch which shows the proposal of how to fix it. So it, it should be fairly understandable for you to, to see what I'm proposing to fix. But again, I want to reiterate, and this is all I have to say, is I wanted to bring this to your attention, wanted to make sure that you are aware and could see in picture of what this property has been dealing with for many, many years, and that I come as a partner to try to repair this.
Probably Mr. Blankenship about this before Mr. Mayor. I met with him on the site, and I think Mr. Kennedy has done the same, and recommend that he come and bring it to us, and we will probably refer this to Public Works Committee to talk about.
Very good. Got to get it started. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda as presented by the town clerk.
Second.
Motion made second. I'll in favor, vote myself.
Aye.
We have a presentation. Kathy Berenger has a proclamation to read.
Whereas breast cancer touches the lives of Americans from every background and in every community across our nation, though great strides have been made in combating this devastating illness, thousands of women and men will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and tens of thousands of women are expected to lose their lives to this disease. During National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor those we have lost, lend our strength to those who carry on the fight, and pledge to educate ourselves and our loved ones about this tragic disease. And whereas the exact causes of breast cancer are unknown, understanding its risk factors is essential to prevention. Older women and those who have a personal or family history of breast cancer are among those at greater risk of developing the illness. Early detection is also key in the fight against breast cancer. Getting recommended screening mammograms can help to detect breast cancer early. Women and men are encouraged to speak with their healthcare provider about breast cancer and to visit www.cancer.gov to learn more about symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas this month, we stand with those who have been affected by breast cancer, and we recognize the ongoing efforts of dedicated advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers who strive each day to defeat this terrible disease. In memory of the loved ones we have lost and inspired by the resilience of those living with the disease, let us strengthen our resolve to lead our nation toward a future free from cancer in all its forms. Now therefore, Mayor Ronnie S. Williams does hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. He encourages citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer.
Thank you, Kathy. Next is the consent agenda. There are 14 items. Does anybody wish to pull any of them?
Mayor, may we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Motion made second. I'll in favor. Vote myself.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is public hearing. David Bamford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, as town attorney, it's my job to give you a little preliminary information about the hearing that's coming up. This is a conditional use zoning matter in a CUP SB for Thompson Business Park on West Garner Road. This is, because it's a conditional use zoning and has a subdivision plan that'll have to be approved by the council, this has really two components. One is the zoning component, which is a matter of the council hearing, the presentations of everybody who's interested in talking about this and deciding, well, it's in the public interest to, to rezone this property as requested. The second then is a site-specific look at the, the development proposal for the particular property. Under state law, that is called a quasi-judicial proceeding because it's a matter of an applicant seeking a permit. So basically, what we have here is that there are two sets of rules, two sets of different rules that apply. In the zoning case, when the matter's first called, there will be a presentation by the staff, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to speak, and then members of the public who wish to be heard can speak on it. Then we will go to additional testimony by the, by the staff and probably the applicant on the actual development plans. That is a subject that is by state law reserved to expert witness testimony and, and probably not an opportunity for the public to speak, but if you have a question about something somebody says, call to our attention, and we'll try to get somebody to answer it for you. The first item of business we have to do is that the council, under state law, has to be, made, made an inquiry as to whether any members of the council have had any, what the law calls ex parte communications, that is emails, letters, communications, conversations, whatever, from anybody representing the applicant or anybody representing an opponent of this project to, before, before this hearing. The idea is that this is sort of like a court proceeding, and that means that all the evidence that the council hears should be presented here in this room at the hearing tonight and not before. So I'll ask the council if anyone has any ex parte communications they need to disclose. And there being none, the next question we're required to ask the council is whether anyone has any preconceived bias or prejudice against or for this application that could not be altered by hearing the evidence, and if so, you need to disclose that. There being none, the next matter of business is that the people who testify in connection with the subdivision plan must be sworn, and we'll call everybody who's going to testify, you know, as an applicant's witness or, or staff or whatever, or anyone with credentials as a expert in one of the relevant fields, to come forward at this time to have the oath administered by the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we're ready to proceed. If you'd like to open the hearing, Mr. Bamford's here to present the applicant's.
Public hearing is open.
Bamford.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional use application. It has both conditional rezoning and a conditional use subdivision plan. The property is located on West Garner Road. The total acreage of the rezoning and project site is 33.7 acres. The planning commission did review this case at their meeting on September the 16th. This is a map of the rezoning and project site. It consists of four separate parcels. There are two parcels located here. There's a larger parcel here, and there's also a smaller piece to the south. This is a Google Street View of the rezoning site looking northeast, I believe. T-TNE, that business is located directly across the road on the west side of West Garner The total acreage is 33.7 acres. Approximately 5.05 acres of this site is currently zoned service, business, general use. So the areas that are currently zoned service business do not have any zoning conditions on them. The remaining 28.65 acres of the project site is zoned residential 20 or R-20, which is a single-family zoning district. On this map, West Garner Road is located on the west side of the site. Directly to the north is, is an undeveloped property zone, R-20. To the east, we have some residential properties, Zone R-9 and R-40. To the south, we have Weston Ridge subdivision zone MR-1, which is obsolete zoning district. We also have a vacant undeveloped tract located to the south, Zone multifamily 1. To the west, across the street, we have T-TNE. We also have industrial 1 and industrial 2 zoning in this vicinity. This is a list of rezoning cases in this area of Garner. The most oldest case on site was from 1979, and this was the five acre sites that are zoned service business out of that 33.7 acre site. The case from 1997, I believe, was the rezoning for Weston Ridge subdivision, and the Greens Grill or Angie's site was rezoned in 2000. The existing zoning on the property, we do have some service business zoning, 5.05 acres, and this is a heavy commercial zoning that allows office, retail, light, industrial, with outdoor storage. The 28.65 acre zone, R-20, this is a single-family zoning district that allows single-family stick build or modular homes. It also allows churches and schools. And the maximum density for R-20 is around 2.18 units per acre. The requested zoning for the site, 29.63 acres will be zoned service business conditional use District 218, and the remaining 4.14 acres will be rezoned to R-9 conditional use District 218. And the R-9 portion is located on the east side of the creek, and we'll show you a map in just a second. So the rezoning for the front portion, which is 29.63 acres, will be service business conditional use 218, and there is a creek that does have a riparian buffer that runs through the eastern portion of the site, and the applicant's proposed to rezone the back 4.14 acres from R-20 to R-9 conditional use. The applicant has proposed zoning restrictions on the site for both the R-9 portion and also the SB portion. For the R-9 portion on the east side of the creek, the applicant has proposed to limit the uses to single-family detached, single-family subdivisions, residential cluster, and modular For the 29.63 acre portion, the applicant has proposed the following use restrictions. Service business allows a wide range of uses, approximately 55 uses, so the applicant has proposed to limit the list to these: community service, educational facilities, funeral homes, government facilities, healthcare, religious institutions, office, retail sales and service, and this would also include outdoor operations, self-service storage, vehicle sales and service, light industrial, which would include outdoor storage, manufacturing and production indoor only, warehouse and freight movement, wholesale sales, and waste-related services. All other SB uses that would, that are permissible in general use zoning that are not listed here would be prohibited. The applicant has also proposed some site conditions. The first one has to do with lighting that's adjacent to residential uses. And the lighting shall meet the following requirements: floodlights are prohibited; all site lights shall have, shall be full cut off fixtures; site lights shall have a maximum height of 25 feet. So the first condition has to do with lighting next to residential developments. The next condition has to do with landscaping buffers provided next to residential lots. And this talks about the minimum height at installation, the types of shrubbery and plants to be installed, and this is above and beyond the minimum landscaping requirements of the UDO. So the applicant is proposing some additional landscaping and screening along the lots that are residential, that are adjacent to this site. The Garner Ford Plan, the Garner Ford Plan designates the 5.05 acre sites that are currently zoned service business as light industrial. For the remaining area, the Garner Ford Plan does designate this as medium-density residential, and this designation would suggest single-family duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhome-style developments with no less than 2 and 1/2 units per acre, and no more than 5 units per acre. Also on the Garner Ford Plan, on the west side of West Garner Road, the plan does have some heavy industrial areas designated, but the majority of the designation in this area is predominantly medium-density residential with some pockets of commercial to the north and also to the south. Looking at the guiding principles of the Garner Ford Plan, we find that this request is in support of the following: under living spaces, the proposed subdivision layout will allow that fencing, tree buffers, and berms can also be used to create complementary, non-controversial developments. This is on page 65. Number two, the proposed subdivision layout does not promote the addition of light industrial traffic to the adjacent residential streets, thereby allowing the public areas of the neighborhoods to be better maintained and remain a positive asset. This is on page 68. So the proposed, proposed subdivision plan will not have any direct connectivity into any single-family neighborhoods. Working places is also a guiding principle. Number one, the business park subdivision can support the idea that investing in streetscaping and seeking opportunities for redevelopment of commercial properties has happened and should continue to occur in North Garner, page 74. Based on the proceeding, staff offers that the proposed rezoning from service business general use and R-20 general use to service business conditional use 218, and also single-family residential R-9 conditional use 218, is partly inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Ford Plan. It's, it's not quite consistent with the future land use map, but it is consistent with the guiding principles that we talked about on the previous slide. And that is the end of my presentation for the rezoning portion of this request, and I'll stop here for any questions. And Jeff will pick up after the public hearing with the details of the subdivision site plan.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, I guess it'd be a time to ask it. David, the, was it like 4.1 acres or something that was going to be, or is proposed to be rezoned, R-9? You may have said this, what, what, what density per acre does R-9 zoning allow?
It allows around four units an acre.
Four units.
At, at this time, the applicants don't, they do not have any specific development plans proposed at this time, but this zoning change would match the higher densities that are allowed in the Weston Ridge subdivision, so this would be a site for future development.
In essence, it'd be pretty consistent with the properties that are next to it, or...
Correct. There is, the piece directly to the east is Zone R-9. To the south, we have some MF-1 zoning that's vacant, and Weston Ridge subdivision is Zone MR-1. So the R-9 zoning is, is compatible with the zoning in this area.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, what, what do we do next? We want to hear a snap layer together.
I'm finished with the zoning presentation.
Does anyone plan to speak on behalf of the applicant on the zoning part?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pam Porter with TMTLA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. We did the rezoning as well as the subdivision, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the rezoning, or if you'd rather wait till Jeff does the subdivision presentation, I can answer all of the questions at that point as well.
Let me better.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Thompson, and I live at 1021 Evolved Drive in Garner. I've been here, born and raised in Garner all my life. Business owner nearby, T-TNE Iron Metal, and property here is something we bought 15 years ago, and now that it's bought, paid for, I would really appreciate your support on this business park. Here to answer any questions if you like.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the zoning application? Anybody in the public wants to address the council? Grew up, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jeff Trezenberg, Planning Director for the town of Garner. As David mentioned, the acreage for the property is about 33.7 acres total. The subdivision plan includes seven commercial lots and one residential. The use will be a commercial business park for the majority of, of the site. In reference to lot sizes, there's a minimum 6,000 square foot lot size requirement in the service business district. And then in the R-9, you typically would have a 9,000 square foot minimum, but it can be as small as 6,000 square feet depending on the type of subdivision approval they would seek out. Setbacks of note where the commercial zoning does residential uses. There will be a 25-foot setback. That's one of those where if it's adjacent to other commercial or other industrial, they can actually have a zero setback, but wherever there's potentially more of a conflict between that commercial and residential, the 25-foot setback is enforced. Here is the site plan. We have West Garner Road over here to the left side of the screen. You'll see here a cul-de-sac tentatively entitled Recycling Lane. The applicant did secure a variance for the length of the cul-de-sac due to the presence of the new riparian buffers and some wetlands in the area. That was obtained from the Board of Adjustment a few months ago. There are two existing businesses on lots 1 and 2 that will continue. This would add lots 3 through 7. And then this residential portion in the back, initially they were showing five lots along the extension of Quiet Refuge Lane, but at this point, we're just asking them to go ahead and preserve that as one lot. That way, when there is a proposal in the future to develop the subdivision, that will come in as a separate request. And just to point out also, there is no connection here, Grassy Rio Lane, that's right. There is no direct connection between the Weston Ridge subdivision and the proposed business park. However, there could be, and probably will be, at least emergency access so that emergency vehicles would have a second way into the business park if needed. In terms of open space, the residential tract will require a minimum of 10%, and that will be required upon further major subdivision, as I noted previously. In terms of landscaping and buffer requirements, that would be effective now. The tree cover perimeter buffers and street buffers will all be looked at during subsequent plans for each parcel. The street trees are what will be provided now. A street lighting plan will be required to be approved prior to construction drawing, and the onsite lighting for each of the individual parcels will be reviewed with each subsequent plan. For the subdivision, the inspections department together with the fire department has reviewed and given their preliminary approval. and given their preliminary approval. There is no FEMA-designated flood plain on this site. There is a creek that comes down to the east of the Cloverdale subdivision and crosses Meadowbrook Drive, but that flood plain designation ends right at about the intersection there of Weston and Meadowbrook. But you can see the various blue lines coming across. This is the one here where we had the Neuse River designation and the wetlands, and then this stream here to the east is what will divide the commercial from the residential. For stormwater management, Thompson Business Park is an industrial park with a residential component not located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen and water quantity for the 110 and 25-year storms. At this time, the development plan does propose a stormwater control measure and an underground detention system. These devices will provide treatment for the nitrogen and any water quantity requirements at this site. In terms of water and sewer available in several places, we have a sewer line in Garner Road itself. There's an eight-inch draw here through the property to the north that goes back to Cloverdale. There's also a run back here along that eastern stream. Water, again, is on the east side of Garner Road, so literally right at their front door, as well as stubs on both Rio Grassy, Grassy Rio Lane and Quiet Refuge. In terms of roads and sidewalk, the project will widen West Garner Road to include some additional pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a bus stop for the new Route 20 that's called for in this vicinity. A Quiet Refuge Lane will be extended eastward with curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides. And then, again, as I noted previously, emergency access only from Grassy Rio Lane. When we looked at conformity with the various plans, the statements that we drafted were that the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Garner Road as a two-lane divided facility and also recommends two-lane local street connectivity to the east in this area. The bicycle and pedestrian portions of the plan call for a proposed greenway along the Neuse River buffer and stream crossing the eastern portion of the site. A greenway easement will be incorporated prior to Town Council approval, which it has, with future construction required with the subsequent major residential subdivision. Finally, the transit portion of the plan identifies a transit loop with bus stops along West Garner Road with the proposed widening of Garner Road, the extension of Quiet Refuge Way, the provision of the bus stop on Garner Road, and the provision of a public greenway easement. Across the eastern portion of the site, the plans may now be considered consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the parks, rec, open space, and greenways master plan revealed no additional recommendations in the project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered with that plan. And finally, after sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project as now proposed conforms to the regulations of the UDO so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. And we have four. Prior to approval by the Town Council, which we can strike that one, so there will actually only be three, a public greenway easement has been provided. Prior to receipt of the approved plans, the Engineering Department inspection fees must be paid to the town. Prior to construction drawing approval, a street lighting plan shall be approved by the TRC. And prior to issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department, and the 25-foot buffer shall be reestablished along the northern property line. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their September 16 meeting. By unanimous vote, they did confirm staff's findings, being in conformity with adopted town plans and policies, and further accepted the staff's statements regarding partial zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, detailed in Section 5 as their own and recommended approval of CUDZ 1905 to you on a unanimous vote. We do have motions recommended for you. I will note that, again, that we can strike that first of the four site-specific conditions. Your zoning motion is on page ninety-eight, and the site subdivision plan motion on page one hundred.
Jeff, do we, of course, the applicant's here, I guess, do we know what the applicant plans to, or what type businesses might go on those vacant lots, or is that undetermined at this time?
That would be a better question for them. They have narrowed it down to that list of uses in the zoning document, but I don't know that they have tenants identified for each parcel yet.
We're going to hear from them next. Okay, the applicant, it's council, have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll hear from the audience. Anybody in the audience want to address the council?
Applicant first.
Back again.
Me again. Pam Porter, TMTLA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. Thank you for considering our rezoning and our subdivision tonight. Just to touch on the question that was just asked, there are no, as far as I'm aware, there are no tenants for these lots yet. I don't know if Ronnie Thompson has had conversations with anybody, but there's no plans for any specific tenants at this time.
Thanks for answering.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you.
One question.
Sure.
The, on the site plan, the lots one and two are to existing businesses. Is that driveway, the existing driveway, that road up there is always a little bit different? Looks like it's in the same location.
Some of it's in the same location. So, the location that we're showing on the proposed plan is to avoid impacts to the wetlands and to the stream buffer. We obviously have to cross the stream when Quiet Refuge is extended, but the recycling lane was designed to avoid conflict and also to make sure that Lot 6 could also be possibly a building lot, not just a stormwater lot. So, I think it follows the existing gravel drive till maybe about where Lot 1 ends and Lot 2 begins. I know it kind of zigzags and then goes between the two stream buffers.
In the similar facilities, vicinity is what's there?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Very good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Applicant. Ready to close the hearing, Mr. Mayor? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that the Town Council find that although the rezoning request is, excuse me, partly inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan as detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow appropriate types of business and industry at the described location, which will provide opportunities for access to goods and/or services useful to the surrounding I guess I'm on the next page here. Find consistent with the town's planning ordinance and approve. Find consistent, let's see, where am I, Jeff? I move, I move approval of the rezoning request, as has been noted. Maybe I'm missing some wording, but I've lost it on my computer here.
Jeff?
Want me to pick it up for you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll follow Mr. Marshman's. I motioned that we move the Town Council find that although the rezoning request is partly inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan as detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, it is reasonable and in the public interest likely because it will likely allow appropriate types of businesses and industry at the described location, which will provide opportunities for access to goods and/or services useful to the surrounding area. Therefore, I move further the Town Council adopt ordinance 2019-4007 approving rezoning request CUDZ 1905. In doing so, also amend the town's comprehensive growth plan from a, excuse me, from designating the Western 24.51 plus or minus acres of the subject property identified previously as medium-density residential to quote-unquote "light industrial."
Second. Motion is second. Further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. I flipped the page at the wrong spot, so thank you.
That's all right.
I support the motion.
There's always the technology.
Yeah.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Very good. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, we now need to approve or vote on, excuse me, we need to vote on a conditional use permit motion. And I will make a motion that the council accept the staff's statements regarding the plan consistency in Section 7 of the report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14. D. Therefore, approve CUP SP 1902 Thompson Business Park with the three standard conditions and the site-specific conditions stated. Some have been already approved according to Mr. Trezenberg listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Motion is second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Now, we into new and old business. Meadowbrook property contract.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We have before you tonight two contracts for your review for the development of both Meadowbrook and Jurgen Properties. Tonight with us, we have Matt Gross who's here with McAdams. McAdams has been working alongside us, leading up our comprehensive plan along with the work required for the master plans you have before you tonight. So, at this time, I'll ask Matt Gross to come up and share with you information regarding those two contracts.
Good evening, y'all. Sonya said, my name is Matt Gross. I'm a landscape architect with the McAdams Company. Met with most of you guys on Thursday, so good to see you guys again. Pull these up in front of you guys. So, as McAdams has been working through the comp plan, we've also been working through the Meadowbrook Master Plan as well. That one, the Meadowbrook Master Plan came online around the same time that the comprehensive master plan did. During our due diligence process of the Meadowbrook Master Plan, we found out the cultural resources are present as understood by the National Register of Historic Deeds. So, with that being said, the original Meadowbrook Master Plan was issued a change order so that we could bring a consultant onto the team to do a little more homework for us and really advise us and the town on how we can move forward with the current state of the property. Around the same time, the Jurgen property was then purchased. So, at that time, we developed another proposal, and by doing that, we were able to combine a lot of the community engagement together to run those concurrently so that we can provide some cost savings there. So, one of the things that we really like to do, I mentioned this on Thursday, is we really like to provide park-specific master plans concurrently with comprehensive plans because what that does is it allows us to have the most current data for public community involvement that you can have. And it's not just a park-specific, very focused community engagement process either. It's widespread, and it reaches the entire town, which both of these park properties, as it's been mentioned to us throughout the beginning, early stages of this process, would reach not just the neighborhoods themselves, but could potentially be regional draws for the community. So, just to walk you through some of the changes that we've done on Meadowbrook to work Meadowbrook and Jurgen side by side. Meadowbrook, the bit, as soon as you start to see some of the costs combined together is down in the community engagement phase of the project. So, there you have your original fee of $8,000. We've revised that to $12,000 so that we can include some additional meetings that we've been asked to work through alongside the Parks and Rec Department and as well as joining the Jurgen property together. So, that new fee is the $12,330. And then, as we move through this project, one of the things that I'll point out here is the architecture fee of $12,000. That will not change. We, the architect that we have on staff, will work with us to develop both plans under the same fee. So, that's another way that we've been able to work both of these projects concurrently is we're able to use the same fee for multiple projects. Another item that we adjusted Meadowbrook on is the operational analysis and pro forma. This area, since the Jurgen property was recently purchased, it was a conversation to move this to the Jurgen property so that we can get that analysis done quickly for Jurgen so that it's streamlined and done at the same time. The Jurgen, as we've been told, has, is a pretty big high priority for the town, so we wanted to move the pro forma for that project. And then, down here at the bottom, we've summarized all the changes because this can get confusing when we're shifting things around. As you see, the original fee for the project, the change order to bring in the cultural resources consultant to help us with working through the State Historic Preservation Office. And then, we have the revised total where we've also credited that $8,800 for the pro forma to give us a new total of $74,430. Does anybody have any questions for the Meadowbrook property before I move on? All right. I will move to the Jurgen property where there is a similar understanding here. One of the things that we've done as we're working through the comprehensive plan, and we're trying to do these concurrently all under one roof, is the community engagement process for the comprehensive plan has just been wrapped up. And the Jurgen property, as I've mentioned, came online much earlier than the community engagement process finished for the comp plan. One of the things that we wanted to do was to go ahead and get the due diligence process moving for Jurgen while the community engagement process was wrapping up for the comp plan. So, and the way that we did that is we broke this contract into two parts. The first part would include just the due diligence. So, we are, as I mentioned on Thursday, we are in the throes of the due diligence process, hoping to have a finished report by the end of this week, early next week. And that, this part one of the project has been executed by the town, so we are actively moving. One of the things that we've noticed so far, excuse me, is the fact that there is a really high value for these due diligence reports. So, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but it really allows us to, once we get that community engagement, we're able to springboard right into action plan and move into the part two, which is what I'll mention now. The part two portion of this plan resumes with community engagement and needs assessment. As you can see here, the fee for this portion of the Jurgen contract is significantly less than the Meadowbrook, and that's a result of combining the two projects together to run them simultaneously. The public open houses, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, the athletic stakeholder meeting, and the public opinion survey will all be combined to make use for both parks. We've already held the athletic stakeholder meeting as well as the adjacent neighborhood meeting for both park, for both the Meadowbrook Park as well as Jurgen. And from a timing standpoint, that worked really well, given our 50% presentation of the comprehensive plan. So, we went ahead and provided that public engagement portion, but it made, it made a lot of sense for the overall project schedule. So, that's one area we're already starting to see some cost savings for Jurgen. The next area is the visioning session. And so, Jurgen, we break down the cost savings a little more specifically because each item has presentations associated with it, at which point, we will combine those presentations with the Meadowbrook property. So, we're going to automatically see some cost savings for the Jurgen contract. So, here for the visioning session, you're seeing a savings of $3,000 for the conceptual design alternatives. You're seeing a savings of another $33,45. That's because we have two presentation, or we have one presentation, two staff, which will be combined with Meadowbrook. So, we're already making savings there through our preparation for that presentation as well as the presentation itself. And then, moving to the final master plan, we see a savings there of $8,95, which that savings is, like I said earlier, is because we've lumped it with Meadowbrook. And then, as you see down here, we have included the $8,800 fee, which is that service provider and operational analysis and pro forma, at which point, we'll bring in a subconsultant to walk alongside us to work through what are the implications for this project? How can we get a return on investment? You know, what's our management strategy to make this park successful as well as a project that isn't just a money, that just costs money, but what are some ways that this project can make money for the town and recoup the investment? this project can make money for the town and recoup the investment? So the subtotal for phase two of Jurgen is $37,215. So that number, we will, that does not include the part one, which was mentioned up here. And the part one total was the $12,705. So those were broken separately, and so that brings the overall contract cost to just under $50,000 at 49 and some change. I can't remember the exact number. But that is how we've broken down Jurgen. Does anybody have any questions about how we've broken this one down as well? All right. Sonia, do you have any other comments?
So with that, we were seeking your approval tonight to authorize our manager to sign contracts for both Meadowbrook and Jurgen properties to move forward with the master plan.
I take it that you're fully in satisfaction with the revised proposals that Matt has just made. He covered a lot of territory there in a short period of time.
He did. He really did.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. We are pleased with it. We think it will certainly give us what we need to move forward and make decisions, future decisions regarding both park properties.
Thank you. If a motion, is a motion in order yet, Mr. Mayor? One and two. I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the contract as proposed here this evening by, what's the name of the company? I've forgotten.
McAdams.
McAdams, yeah. Excuse me.
Second.
Motion made and second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, offer a comment. We've appreciated and enjoyed Matt's professionalism and enthusiasm, so please continue.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And we also have Laura who's here tonight. She was, she's sitting quietly in the back, but she also has worked alongside us on the comprehensive plan, and they've done a phenomenal job.
It was a very good presentation last week. Questions answered, nothing left uncovered. We really.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
All right. Thank you.
Got your motion. Here is pass. I guess we go to the Caboose Relocation Depot, Forrest Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Here before you to assess two items tonight. Let's see here. We'll start off with the proposed, a while back, we had been given guidance from you guys to go out and seek pricing on what it would cost to move and relocate both the caboose as well as the depot over to the proposed site at Pearl Street next to 110 Pearl. We have done that. We've gone out, we've received two quotes back for that. We are here before you this evening to ask you to award a contract, to authorize the manager to award a contract to Wolf movers and house building, excuse me, Wolf House and Building Movers, that's a mouthful. The total amount is $66,675 to relocate to that site. Happy to answer any questions you may have about the move.
I have one question, and may be more directed to Mr. Hodges. Is there still the possibility that the railroad will eventually contribute to this moving cost?
There's still the possibility. They have asked us to put in a requisition, a request through their budget process, which closes out at the end of the calendar year, and then they get a new budget at the beginning of the calendar year.
Sooner rather than later.
So they ask us to come back through their budget process for cost share of this project as well as a couple of other railroad corridor things that we've discussed previously.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Forrest, you've also got the renovation contract.
Yes, sir. We're asking you to consider a motion on each of them separately. So we'll need a, if you choose, we'll ask them for, consider a motion.
Just a quick question. Can you anticipate, once we award the contract, how soon the process will begin?
Should these be awarded this evening? Our target is to have the depot on site by early 2020. We anticipate sometime early January is our target.
Good.
I may, has that changed? I thought our target was the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, late December, we're, our goal is as soon as possible. We're trying not to delay it.
Nothing's happened to push it off?
No.
We're going to get on the mover's schedule as soon as we can, and our hope is that we can get it moved by the end of this calendar year.
Thank you for that clarification.
Forrest, you said you wanted separate motions, right?
Yes, sir.
Beginning with the relocation?
Yes, sir.
So if you're ready, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we award the contractor Wolf House and Building Movers to relocate the depot and the caboose. Set the first one in the amount of $66,675. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Renovation contract.
So one of the things we've done as well as this process is we have gone out and sought quotes. As you're aware, the depot is in need of some repair, so we have solicited several months back a number of contractors to come out and give us some pricing on doing some renovation. That renovation primarily consists of replacing all the siding on the building as well as any other rotten wood we may find, doors, windows, and things of that nature. So we have received two quotes. Two of the firms selected come back and chose to give us quotes. One of those quotes, the quote we have before you to consider tonight was from Total Construction. They submitted the low bid in the amount of $83,433.28. The next bidder was somewhere in the, a little more than $10,000 more than this amount. So we feel both of these bids were competitive and find this to be the desired contractor to move forward with.
And this bid also includes the footing and the foundation.
Yes, sorry for that. It does include the site work as well. And that work with the footings and things will need to be installed before we can get the depot on site, so a little time coordination there.
Am I correct in understanding that all of the exterior wood is going to need to be replaced?
Yes, that's what we have asked for to happen.
And that's in general. If they find some wood that's in good enough shape and they can recycle it, I mean, that's fine too, but we want to make sure it's all in great condition. Visually, there's going to be a lot that has to be replaced, but as they start tearing it down, they may find some pieces that can still be used and maybe maintain some of the historic relevance of that exterior, so, yeah.
Need a motion to approve the depot renovation.
All right. I move that we approve the quote, total construction in the amount of $83,433.28 for airing and installing the depot.
Second.
Motion made and second. Further discussion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Treesenberg. Kennedy Page wrote.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, you have before you a request from Mr. Jay Colvin with Dan Ryan Builders, who is here tonight to explain his request more fully. But there is a provision in the ordinance that does allow someone to come back before you in the case of a denial of a project, to request a waiver to the waiting period that is spelled out before they can resubmit. Any waiver would require a vote of three-fourth majority to go through. I will just note also, though, that if, should you decide to grant the lapse in the waiver of the time period for waiting, the project would go back through the entire process again. So there would be a new submittal, a new technical review process, as well as a new planning commission meeting and public hearing. But I'll invite them to come up and explain their request more fully to you.
Hello, Jay Colvin, 4009 Periwinkle, Blue Lane. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for letting me come up here and speak. Yeah, so we came before y'all a couple of months ago asking about this rezoning request, not asking you to reconsider that decision, but asking you to waive the time lapse period so that we can come back in front of you with a revised plan. We are intending to have, as Jeff said, we will have to go through the whole process again. We are also intending to have, you know, notify the neighbors, have another neighborhood meeting so that we can, you know, really fully address their concerns. When we had the last neighborhood meeting, there were some concerns voiced, but we had a, I don't remember exactly how long it was, but it was over two-hour-long meeting, had a lot of questions and comments, a lot of flowing information there. And I had felt like we had fully addressed the concerns of the neighbors there. There were a couple of folks that had items that they wanted to consider, but we didn't hear much from them until the actual night of the vote. So, and then really before we had a chance to fully understand the things that were being requested from us, it came to a vote and got denied. So our request is that you waive the time lapse period, let us have another neighborhood meeting, discuss the project in more depth with those neighbors, and then again, go back through the planning board and then come back in front of y'all after we've gone through that process again.
Every night.
Jay, question for you, reference to the first neighborhood meeting. Where was it held?
It was held at the Baptist, First Baptist Church on St. Mary Street. We had, I think, almost 20 people there in attendance. Quite, it was pretty full, more people than I was expecting. And so they were mostly represented from the street behind us, Longview Street. And so several of those neighbors came out and just asking questions about what we had planned to do, and we'd answered those questions. But hope for this time would be to really discuss the elements, the points that are most relevant to them, what are the things that, you know, we can do to help alleviate their concerns for future development in the area.
How did you notify the public?
By mailing. And we did the buffer. We actually extended the, I'm not, I can't recall if y'all have a required buffer percentage, but we tried to hit everybody that was within 500 feet of the property. If you buffer it on iMap, you can do that.
Does the mailing list, is it reviewed by the town?
I believe so, yes. The other item in our, in our plan that we submitted, the reason, the denial vote was based on an inconsistency with the future land use or comprehensive plan. The site is actually 16 acres in total, both parcels combined, a little over 16 acres. When we did our density calculation, we were only basing it on about eight and a half acres, I believe is the total figure. I'm sorry, it's more than 11 acres. We had reserved about five acres as future development. Our intention is not to develop that, but we were considering other uses on surrounding properties that maybe in the future, when they get developed, they would, they would want to utilize that land. So there is plenty of available space on the property to bring the plan into compliance with the comprehensive plan, so we're going to do that, obviously. And hopefully, we can address some of the open space and green space to alleviate concerns of neighbors as well. That's, that's part of the process behind, or the redesign on the site plan.
Have no further questions.
If I'm reading your letter to Mr. Treesenberg correctly, you're proposing, well, you just sort of said that maybe the area would expand to 13 acres?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Moves to the original.
Yes, sir. And that'll still allow some flexibility for future development if it, if and when somebody wants to do that. Trying to not overburden future development, but also make sure we're in compliance with town plans.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Okay, you got two options. Who's speaking? What do you want to, what do you want to? If you can keep it three to five minutes, we'll give it to you. Real quick.
My name is Tim Holton. I'm at 411 Longview Street in Garner. Thanks again. I really didn't even know that this was happening until just tonight, so I don't have quite the prepared remarks that I would like to have. But recently, I learned that Garner has about, I learned that Wake County roughly has an average selling price of about $360,000 throughout the county. And that only 4% of the housing stock in Garner sells for that, for that price or above. This property is a beautiful wooded piece of property. It's seconds away from the heart of Garner, our beautiful, gorgeous downtown Garner. It ought to be really a gateway to Garner right there. Should have an extension of the character and quality of our beautiful Garner with those beautiful streetlights, the character. I've heard a lot of talk coming to these things, which is all new to me, and I'm just nervous even talking right now. It's really not my thing. Talked about what the market, the market decides these things, and the market is a really difficult thing to clearly define. But if projects that we permit continue to offer lower-level designs, lower-level amenities, lower-level materials, lower-level aesthetics, of course, it's going to translate into lower-level desirability and below-average pricing. Garner is a masterpiece in the making. The days of lower-level and below-average projects and developments must end now, right now. Garner is an all-American city. With proper vision, this stunningly beautiful place, this beautiful dot on the globe, this place we call Garner has the opportunity to become an all-world city, again with the proper vision. I'm afraid these folks are lucky to only have to be required to wait one year because where they started with their proposed project with more of the lower-level and below-average designs, materials, aesthetics, and home pricing, a year is a very short time when this project is light years away from bringing to life a vision for an all-world city. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, sir. My name's John Bosch. I was listed on to speak on this topic.
Do you want to speak? Sign it. Put him there.
Hello, my name's John Bosch. I have owned the said property of 15-some acres for 20-some years, 22 years. And I agree with the gentleman that it's a wonderful place, although, however, it looks quite nice and forested as it is. But I've tried to sell that as single-family development with the green spaces and so forth to, over the past six or seven years. And believe you me, market does make a difference. Every developer, potential developer, large and small, said it was absolutely not feasible to work on it. There were 18-foot retaining walls, and there were numerous streams to work over that cost a quarter of a million dollars to cover, and they simply said it's too much. So I was very fortunate to have Ryan come on board and work with them, and let me to work with them, to get something that I feel it does help Garner, and it will provide a lot of green space. And I'm convinced personally that it's the best we can achieve, I can get, to subsidize and help with my retirement in the near term. And I think that waiting would just be, we've gotten pretty much the most, I think, we can get in terms of desirability, and I would ask you to consider seriously to get this waiver in place so we could get moving with overcoming the objection that was there before. My name's John Bosch. I'm at 8525 Kempton Road in Rollins. I'm at 8525 Kempton Road in Raleigh.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, we need a motion to consider either grant or deny the waiver.
We make a motion, Mr. Brown. One concern I have on this is, we had, I think, five or six speakers from the public, not including, I think, Mr. Colvin spoke last time, and also another gentleman spoke about this, and I, I just, we hadn't had a request to do this in a long, long time. And most, you know, if, if, we approve something and it's modified, it's brought in the staff, they tweak this and tweak that, it's nothing major, it falls within the U D O, the comp plan. The concern I have on this is, the people who spoke, and then it was denied that night, many of them, Mr. Holton found out, and many of them aren't aware that we're sitting here discussing starting it back again. That's the biggest concern I have, is that those people aren't, unless we notify them all, do we notify everyone who spoke in the public hearing?
I don't think that's part of the process for this portion of the, of the requests.
That's the biggest concern I have, is you're going to...
If it goes forward, we would definitely be required to notify...
And I realize that, but, but, you know, they think it's, they think it's done, they think it's finished for a year or longer, and so, you come back and you take action to do it. And I know there's a, a, you're allowed to ask for a variance on the timeframe, but that's the biggest concern I have, is that those people think it's, the, we've already had a vote, it's been determined, now they're back here again.
Okay. Well, if I understand the process correctly, obviously, we're just expediting the time. The, the neighbors and people like Mr. Holton there will certainly have an opportunity to come in and address their concerns all over again, and there certainly are some modifications to the plan. I'm sympathetic some to the property owner who, who's trying to, to realize the profit off his property, which any reasonable person would do. So, I mean, if you're eliminating the opportunity for opposition to, to not come and speak again, that would concern me, but given how the process will basically be starting, those who are opposed to it certainly will have their full right to, to speak against it, I'd be inclined to, to, to grant the waiver.
Did you want to put it in form of a motion?
Well, I didn't know if other councilmembers want to weigh in, but I'll be prepared to put it in form.
Go ahead.
Jay, you can make up. In reference to contacting the public, you will go through the same process, and will that, and will that mailing list that you use again be approved by the town?
Yes.
Yes, okay, be approved by the town?
Yes.
So, the same folks will be notified?
Yes.
That this is coming back again?
And most likely, it would be in the same location, same timeframe, all those things. The, the primary reason that we're asking for the waiver is, is we want to get a chance to address, you know, really sit down with the neighbors, figure out what their concerns are, see if we can, or, or what we can do to best alleviate those concerns. And then two, for Mr. Bosch's sake, we want to know, you know, what, if, if, if this is not going to be the potential project for us, we want to be able to move on, we want him to be able to move on and, and figure out what he's going to do with the property. So, that's the main issue behind the waiver.
I'm just, I'm curious, why would, why would this project? That this doesn't happen? Sort of like the rules are...
Excuse me, sir. Can, excuse me, sir, can you come to the witness, I mean, to the podium if you're...
It seems like he, these folks understood the rules. You present something, doesn't fly, you gotta, you know, you better go do a lot of homework, and you come back in a year. That's how it's set up. This is something rare. So, I, there's, I don't see what compels this particular project to require some expedited change-up in the way that things are done.
Mr. Holden, you, you make me believe that you think they're bringing back the same proposal, but if I understand correctly, I think a substantial modification to the original proposal is, is being made.
It would be impossible for him to do the same project, right? So, I would suspect something, some things will change, but it's like when you're a kid, you had a timeout, you got to think about it for a while, and then you can come back when you're ready and give us something that, that's superior.
Thank you.
That's just the way it's set up. That's the way this town of governor works.
Well, I don't think it's unprecedented for this to happen. It doesn't happen very often. I'm not sure when we've considered one, but many times the applicant doesn't come back. But I, I, I hear your point, but I don't know if things will change a year from now or less than a year from now if we grant the waiver.
Maybe somebody will come in with a better idea than these folks.
It's possible.
And they want to get it, they're hoping that they can wiggle something through before somebody comes in with something far better for Garner. So, that's, I think they should wait their turn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're being asked to consider the motion to either grant or deny. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant the waiver.
Second.
Second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four to one.
Three to one.
What do we got? Okay, it passed.
And that required a three-quarters approval, so that's three out of four, so, yeah.
It did require a special three-quarters vote, right?
Part of the night at one time. Already denied it. The rules are in place for a reason.
Cast your motion with what?
Mr. Grant the waiver.
Got a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Vote by saying aye.
I voted aye.
I believe we've already taken a vote, Mr. Mayor.
We're doing it, just to be sure. He got confused. Okay, ready to move? Paying class funders, BD.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. Several months ago, you instructed...
Excuse me for one moment. Is there a question about whether it, it needed three-quarters approval, and three out of four approved it to have a waiver, so?
Yeah, I don't know if this is called a roll, but I mean, it wasn't confusing in my mind, so.
Let's call a roll, usually when the votes not unanimous. We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn?
I voted aye.
Councilmember Maringer?
Aye.
Senator Singleton?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, one, three to one. Paying class, okay, BD.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. Thanks for your time this evening. Several months ago, you instructed me to source a new vendor for our annual paying class studies, as well as find a vendor for a one-time compression or equity analysis study. Tonight, what I wanted to do is share with you my recommendation on a new vendor, share with you the methodology that I went through, provide you with a little bit of background with regards to the vendors that were sourced, and then ask for your consideration to authorize the town manager to move forward with that new vendor so that we can begin the process. The first step in the process was to source several vendors to request bids from. I requested bids from an organization called Springstead, which is a national human resources and compensation organization. Also requested a bid from Capital Associated Industries, which is our local employer association, as well as a third bid from an organization called Kenning Consulting out of Palm Springs, California. What you see before you on your screens and up on the large screens here in the auditorium are the two bids that I did receive back, received a bid back from Kenning Consulting and also from Capital Associated Industries. I've included a little bit of background with regards to both vendors, specifically Capital Associated Industries is our local employer association. They do quite a bit of work, both from a private as well as a public, both in terms of compensation, employee relations, recruiting, and talent management, and also from Kenning Consulting. And several highlights with regards to Kenning. They were responsible as an organization for redesigning the state's compensation plans, as well as the current work that they're doing in Mecklenburg County with regards to their compensation plans as well. I've listed there some pros and cons to each of the two bids that we received. I've also listed out the costs broken out by the annual paying class study. The costs that you see there are, are one-year costs for each year. As you know, we do not review 100% of our jobs each year. We roughly review one-third of our town jobs, as well as the fire department positions, and over a three-year cycle, we have reviewed 100% of the jobs. And then the second cost in each of those lines is for the one-time compression or equity analysis that has been requested from you as well. My recommendation is to go with Kenning Consulting. I was able to complete several reference checks on Kenning Consulting. I first talked with Jen Moretz, who is the senior HR manager for Total Rewards in Mecklenburg County. She is the primary contact currently with Kenning Consulting on the work that's being done there. Some of her comments to me with regards to the work of Kenning Consulting, the first thing she told me, she says Neville, who is the principal for that organization, is amazing, very knowledgeable, very accessible, brings some fun to compensation. That's, that's saying a lot, given the work of compensation consultants, easy to work with, very good with time management, and her last comments to me were, you can't go wrong in hiring him. Also had the opportunity to talk to Paula Herman. Paula Herman is the HR director for Mecklenburg County, and she was formerly the deputy human resources director for the state of North Carolina. So, she had some insight into the current project that is being worked on in Mecklenburg County, as well as the project that Kenning Consulting worked on for the state of North Carolina. Some of Paula's comments included that the organization has a good rapport working with the governor, his cabinet members, town managers, city, county managers, department heads, staff, and council at the state level, at the county level, very strong communications, exceptional quality work. He has a proven methodology and very knowledgeable. And she closed her comments to me by saying that she has worked with him for many years and would highly recommend he and his organization. So, I stand before you tonight to ask you and for your consideration to authorize the town manager to sign the contract with Kenning Consulting so that we can begin in earnest with our annual paying class study, which typically starts in the month of October, finishes in the month of January, as well as running concurrently this year with our one-time compression analysis study, which will also be done in that same timeframe, with the goal of presenting to you the findings of both our annual paying class study and the one-time equity analysis in late January, early February, as we begin the budget work for the next budget cycle. At this point, I'll entertain any questions that you might have of me.
BD, the compression analysis is going to be inclusive of all positions, all departments and all positions?
Yes, sir.
And the, the annual pay study will be a third, as, as has been in, in past?
That's correct. And, and just to add to that, with regards to the compression study, the, the fire positions will also be done as a part of this study.
Everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it, Mr. Sackler, probable that one of the significant difference in cost is the, is the fact that we're dealing with a consultant that's on the West Coast?
No, the, I think the costs are just based on, on the scope of work in terms of how they go about doing that work. One of the things I included in here were, were some of the costs. The fees are inclusive, directly related travel and ground expenses for Kenning Consulting, and then travel, if necessary, is billed at current IRS mileage rates for CAI.
Well, I was assuming it is more costly for Kenning to, to, to get here unless they have a local office somewhere.
Yeah, they do not have the local office, but because they're working on the project in Charlotte, in Mecklenburg County, that helped with regards to, to some of the travel offset.
Listen, today's world, east coast, west coast, north coast, south coast, it's technology, they don't even have to fly here to do some of the work. I mean, that's the way the world works nowadays. You don't have to have a local office anymore.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, we, we take the recommendation of Mr. Sackler and authorize the manager to go with Kenny, Kenning Consultants, and authorize the manager to sign that contract so this process can get started.
Yes, second.
I will second Mr. Singleton's motion.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, committee, committee reports. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, we have a number of reports in your agenda, including Garner info, and then we included the DOT project update. There's a list, as you recently heard, DOT has put on hold several projects throughout the state due to funding and having to pay out money and some litigation, and that does include some Garner projects, so we have a list here for you if there's any questions about it. We'll try to answer those, but basically, some of the projects as we, as we thought were going to be coming forth in the next one or two years are going to be delayed a little longer than that, till the funding is restored. And there's a list, I don't, you know, I don't know if you want me to go through them, but, you know, includes the, the 50 Bridge, the Vandorah Springs Bridge, the, the reconfiguration of Timber Drive at Hammond, and a couple of other things out Mechanical Boulevard, Simpkin Road area, where they were going to convert it to the super street, that's going to be put on hold a few more years, a couple more years, and some other significant things throughout Garner.
Did I understand correctly that the 50 Bridge replacement is going to be delayed?
Yes, that is...
January 21st?
Is that on the second page? I see.
Bottom of the first, I'm leaving.
Bottom, yeah.
Says let 1/21st, I'm going to say it's been delayed about a year.
Yeah, so they will let, instead of letting it in 2020, it's going to be let in 2021. The bid's going to be let in 2021.
But according to this schedule, the Vandorah Springs Bridge is, will be let basically a year later. So, I, to me, that was on schedule, I thought they were talking 23 or 24, but anyway.
Yeah, those are pretty close together, aren't they?
So, the only ones that are going to happen in the very near future are going to be is the bridge on White Oak, excuse me, on Rainer Road, which we knew was going to be coming down there south of...
Yes.
Of... Of where the fire station is. And then the conversion to the super street of Old Stage Road.
401, yes.
Up to 401, that's going to be let next year also, so that'll start next year.
Yes. And that super street, just to note, has two phases, so the one that will be let in 2020 is from Old Stage Mechanical, but there is another phase several years later, nine years or so later, from Simpkins to Mechanical.
Mr. Dickerson, if I could just add, just for clarification, that one is very confusing because there are projects that actually overlap their boundaries with DOT. And so, the project that will move ahead sooner will be the one from Anaron Court to just south of Old Stage. But if you look at the description of the other project that's been pushed out to 2029, it overlaps that product, project, and goes further south and slightly further north. It's just a very unique way in which DOT put these two into the straight state transportation plan. That has nothing to do with the change in funding recently. It's just a very unique way the two projects were set up. So, just for the sake of anybody that might be listening or watching, we are, the one from Anaron Court to Old Stage will be moving ahead next year.
Second phase from Simpkins Roads up to where the overlaps, whether to Old Stage or Anaron or Mechanical, will also involve either the replacement or the additional lanes on those two bridges. They're just at, not Simpkins Road, but Legend Road. Two-lane bridges, and it says there are going to be two, six, there are going to be two three-lane roads, so they'll either replace the bridges or make additions to the bridge.
That's a long way down, isn't it?
According to this, it's at least 10 years out. That's just a right of way.
Okay, Rodney, anything else?
Other items, just of note, Food Truck Rodeo on October the 20th. It starts at 12 o'clock, and it's being called Trick or Eat. And just to note that there's a candidate's forum tomorrow, October the 8th, at the GPAC at 7 o'clock. The town will be assisting with the recording of that on Facebook Live, but that'll be recorded on the Chamber site, and the Chamber is hosting, so we don't, the town doesn't have any direct, direct part in that, in that forum.
But it will be recorded for broadcast.
Broadcast, yes. It'll be recorded for broadcast on the Chamber's Facebook page, not the town's. There'll be a performance of The Little Mermaid playing at the GPAC October 18th, 19th, 25th, and 26th. And one thing we wanted to make you aware of, just so there's no confusion, the second meeting in October will be held on Thursday, October the 24th. And that was planned. That's typically where the council makes concession for the management team when we go to our national conference. So, that's, we've been doing that for a number of years. And so, we appreciate you doing that.
Thursday, October 24th.
Yes.
You see, that's the second meeting of this month, is that right?
Second meeting, yes. All right, and then the other thing I wanted to make you aware of, the current Go Triangle Route 102 is being, I guess, substituted for a new route, a Go Raleigh Route 20. John, do you remember when that goes into effect, when that?
Next Monday, the 14th.
Next Monday, the 14th. And that will be more of a, I guess, a commuter route and make a more direct route to the downtown station. It does affect some of the current riders, but in the long run, the plan is to bring back more stops. And, you know, we're doing a study for some of the connector routes in Garner. And hopefully, over time, that will accommodate more riders. So, and John, John's been keeping up with that item, so is there anything else you want to add?
I'll just point out that this service does go from peak hour only for, that was used primarily by commuters to all-day service, so it will actually operate on the, on a one-hour cycle coming to Garner. The route used to come into Garner, go through town, out to White Oak, and return back to Raleigh via the Belt Line. Now, it will actually go from White Oak and return to Raleigh via Garner Road, so there'll be a lot of additional neighborhoods that can be served by it, and facilities like our senior center can be served by the bus as well. So, it will increase frequency immediately, and it will be all day long. The one challenge that some folks who have been using it primarily to commute are finding is that they will have to get on the bus earlier and be on it longer for the AM commute, whereas their PM commute will be about the same. So, we're working through, trying to help get information to current riders as best we can.
How late does it run in the evening, John?
Until 10:30, I believe, is the last departure out of downtown Raleigh, which would get into, back into Raleigh at 11:55. So, it'll start at 6:30 AM, I'm sorry, 5:30 AM and run until 10:30 AM, not PM. And we do have materials from Go Raleigh in the lobby if anybody would like to pick any of those up.
Pretty good.
All right, and the only other thing I have is request a closed session to discuss personnel. And I'll let the town attorney give you the correct sighting for personnel closed session when you do yours.
Along with a session that the attorney requested.
Right, right. Listen. Mr. Sansom, good to have you with us. Would you like to make a few comments?
Should I give you a heads up?
He's an authority on everything.
Joe Sansom, and Nicole's best friends are my good friend. And she's a lady, she and her husband live in Garner. They don't live in Garner, but she's a lady, she's a duo. And I told her a good thing would come to the city council to get a start and a feel of anything. So, I don't know if you want to say anything, Nicole?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Joe Sansom for inviting me to come. I actually do live in Garner. This is my first meeting that I've attended, so I do plan to come back and attend many more. And I just started a business with some colleagues. I worked in North Carolina Division of Public Health for about 16 years. And I, we started a business where we're actually doing community engagement and education and training, so. I don't know, maybe there's an opportunity to do some work here in Garner. So, thank you.
Thank you. We got attorney reports?
We got citations for you, Mr. Mayor. Be NCGS 14331811A3 and 11A6.
The council, Mr. Vance?
Oh, yes, I'd like to concur with Councilwoman Behringer in referencing to the early planning phase for the Middle Book and Jergen Parks with Mac Adams. They did a very, provided us with a very thorough briefing, which was very detailed and, I believe, well-received. So, I think we fell on our way on providing two quality parks for the town based upon the early planning phase. And also, it's good to see you, Mr. Sansom, and also, Mr. Cole.
Nancy?
Yes, sir. I just had a call today from Joey Hopkins, who's the District 5 engineer with DOT, to let me know that they are going to begin work, I believe, tomorrow on the Don Royal Bar Bridge. They hope they have a solution. He said if that wasn't the solution, they would not stop until they found one. So, that is good news. And they are also going to make improvements on the railroad crossing on Jones Sausage Road at White Oak. It's quite bumpy, and there's some potholes. And if I interpreted his remarks today correctly, they were also already supposed to have done that, so the crossing there will be a little easier to navigate. And with regard to Mr. Sansom bringing his friend tonight, if there's anything you would like to know about him, I worked with his dad many years ago. That's all, sir.
Anne? We won't go there, right? The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is I commend the Fire Department for what appeared to be another successful annual event. They put on their annual Fireman's Day, includes a parade, a lot of activities, a lot of good barbecue. But hopefully, they did well with that. I know they raised money for a good cause, for the burn center and other things. So, commend them for a successful event. That's all I have.
I'll follow up with what Ms. Behringer, Mr. Vance mentioned about the planning, this meeting last week, Parks and Rec, working on the parks. That was good information. I also want to thank Public Works, thank Forrest and his crew. I thanked them when I saw them Saturday at Fireman's Day. They did some, did some good work. They'll do good work at all our parks, but I mentioned some of the South Garner Park they did. And I have one of the fields in hell up this year. And you've got a lot of kids playing on some of these fields. It's amazing the fields hold up as well as they do. And so, our team practices and plays at South Garner, and sometime there are three teams practicing at once. As I mentioned at the meeting the other day, maybe 50, 50 kids and adults on the field at one time. That's a lot of wear and tear. And that's just for the first hour and 15 minutes, and the next hour and 15 minutes, they come 40 or 50 more. So, it's amazing our fields hold up as well as they do. But I want to thank Forrest again and the Public Works folks for the work they do. All we need to do park master plans to help take stress off some of these fields. Of course, it puts a lot more work on Public Works, but it will take some of the stress off some of these fields. Because you remember, many years ago, we shut down, we shut down the main field at South Garner Park several years ago, let it rest, it was in bad shape.
It got abused.
We had to close the park, we had to close that field for a year so it could come back, because it's in bad shape. But it's held up really well, so I just want to thank you all for that. That's all.
And then a motion to go to closed session?
And, Mr. Mayor, just before we adjourn, Mr. Kennedy had a few items that he wanted, wanted staff to cover during this meeting. Unfortunately, he's not able to be here, but I wanted to go ahead and just go over a couple of those items real quick. He had asked about the lot that had been cleared on Avisboro, not too far from here, where it used to be a rest home. That's going to be a new rest home. Their building is called the Foundation Senior Living. And then he also wanted staff to look into our requirements for multiple access for subdivisions as it relates to Thompson Road and some things that some folks are looking at over there for that vacant parcel. And so, Jeff's been in contact with the owners about that. And then he also inquired about the Royal Bar Bridge repair. And as Ms. Behringer said, they are planning on repairing that before the end of October. And they're going to use a pressure grouting system where they pump high-pressure seed bent, basically, underneath the, I think, the road. And then it will hopefully lift it up. And if that doesn't work, like you said, they'll go to the next, the next remedy, hopefully. And that's basically it.
Need a motion to go to closed session? So moved, Mr. Mayor, based on the sights by our town attorney.
Second.
Mayors, take it all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.